I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Centerville Education Foundation for Monday, January 24, 2022. Sauber, could you please call the roll? Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Here.
Dr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Schreier?
Here.
Megan Sparks?
Here.
Please answer the flag of allegiance. And flag of allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we'll begin with the honor. Whoa, whoa, sorry. Just kidding. I meant approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Second. Can I have the roll from Ms. Sauber? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Now would you like to honor Dr. Dernbaugh?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Sparks. So tonight, the first part of our honors program is that we have Susan Ralston, who's on the Board of Education, Board of the Centerville Education Foundation. And I believe she's here with two of our student interns who are helping. And so tonight, Mrs. Ralston is going to make the presentations to staff who were funded for their classroom project grants. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Ralston.
Hello. As Dr. Neistat said, my name is Susan Ralston, and I'm proud to be on the Board of Trustees for the Centerville Education Foundation. With me today are my two interns, Sarah Ahmad and Calista Mitchell, both of whom are seniors at Centerville High School and enrolled in the marketing program here. For those that may not know, Centerville Education Foundation's mission is to help maintain Centerville schools as the absolute best place to learn. And we run several programs each year in support of that mission. We host the annual Hall of Fame Awards each spring. And in fact, right now, we are accepting nominations on our website at centervilleeducation.org. So if you know of an outstanding teacher, a distinguished alumni, or an amazing volunteer or community member who deserves this recognition, please consider nominating them. In addition, we administer and award scholarships to graduating seniors who are off to college. And information about those scholarships can also be found on our website at centervilleeducation.org. Our other big thing involves classroom grants, and that's why we're here tonight. Teachers at all levels submit proposals for special projects in their classrooms that go above and beyond the normal curriculum. The foundation evaluates these proposals and then awards grant money to teachers so they can purchase the books or supplies or whatever they need to turn those ideas into reality. The past couple of years, Centerville teachers have had to work harder and get more creative than ever before. And all of us sincerely appreciate everything they are doing. The Centerville Education Foundation is hopeful and proud that these grants will help them in some small but measurable way. Of course, these grants wouldn't be possible without the generous donation from hundreds of parents, alumni, and community members. We thank all of them for their support. And in particular, I want to take a moment to thank the Centerville Noon Optimists Club. The Noon Optimists also have a mission to support the youth in our community. And this year, they decided to make a very generous contribution of $2,500 toward our classroom grant program. We really appreciate the support and thank you to the Noon Optimists. And with that, I'd like to announce this year's classroom grant recipients. Our first one is Literacy, Math, and Science in the Woods by Merrill Matthews, Katherine Satalis, Meredith Florke at Primary Village, Norm. This grant benefits all students from pre-K up to first grade at PBS. In collaboration with the Washington Township Park District, this project will help to create two outdoor classroom spaces. These spaces allow the students to enhance literacy, math, and science learning in authentic manner tied to the cycles of the environment. So congratulations, Merrill, Katherine, and Meredith.
You want the rolling up or?
Yeah, this one.
Our next one is called Growing Readers by Leanne Aldrich and Caitlin Covenant at Primary Village, Dot. This grant benefits kindergarten students at PBS. The goal is to purchase a new diverse set of books which will introduce students to a variety of genres and characters. These books will help lead interactive writing lessons, small group and large group discussions, as well as independent activities that connect back to the theme or lesson of the text. Congratulations, Leanne Aldrich and Caitlin Covenant. Next, we have Driscoll's Second Grade Super Readers Challenge by Serena Aleesi, Lisa Thompson, Nikki Hoff, Taylor Mackel, Jackie Boomer, and Lauren Bridges and Amanda McCormick. This grant benefits all second grade students at Driscoll. The money will be used to purchase high-quality, grade-level-appropriate books that students have access to for their at-home reading, such as Plot on the Beach, Sneak the Incredible Shoo-king Pig, and many others. The goal is to build upon the enthusiasm of the school-wide readathon and encourage each student to read at home for at least 100 nights. Congratulations to this great. Next, we have Homorama by Tish Kemp, Kelly Garts, Katie Combs, Jessica Sanders, Summer Schaefer, and Heather Price at Driscoll Elementary. This grant benefits all third grade students at Driscoll. Homorama is an annual project where each student takes an in-depth journey into one animal species to explore how that animal interacts with its community. The grant money will be used to purchase art supplies, which the students can use to create a three-dimensional book desktop habitat for their animal. The teachers also purchase blank books, which the students will publish, which the students will use to publish their own books about their animal, which will be shared with parents and the community. Congratulations to Ms. Kemp, Garts, Anderson, Schaefer, and Price. Next, we have Podcast Divider Screen by Chrisley Woods at Normandy Elementary. This grant benefits all of Ms. Woods' fifth-grade students. Each year, her students write and perform a mystery podcast, complete with creative sound effects and commercials. To make the podcast more authentic, a divider screen will be purchased so that the performers are completely hidden from view, the way a podcast is normally produced. This will make the podcast more thrilling for the performers and more captivating for the audience. Congratulations, Christie Wood. Next, we have From Farm to Table by Rachel Patton at Normandy Elementary. And this grant benefits all second through fifth grade students at Normandy. The money will be used to purchase a tower garden, which students can use to grow their own fresh produce in the classroom any time of year. Students are more likely to eat fruits and vegetables if they are involved in the gardening process, and they will also learn more about the life cycle of plants. Congratulations, Ms. Patton. Next, we have All Are Welcome Here by Diverse Picturebook Libraries by Julie Schischler, Amy Goheen, and Susan Jones at Stingley Elementary. This grant benefits all second grade students at Stingley and will be used to purchase multicultural picture books for students to enjoy daily. The objective of the project is to provide diverse experiences that are more representative of our community and to allow students to see and enjoy minority authors. This will engage students in our ongoing message this year, which is "All Are Welcome Next, we have Picture Perfect STEM by Stephanie Carter at Stingley Elementary. And this grant benefits all students at Stingley. The money will be used to purchase STEM-related books and activity kits, such as Making Machines with Springs, The Inventor's Secret, and several others. The objective is to integrate curriculum by connecting books and STEM lessons to establish a sense of interest, inquiry, and wonder with science. Books give students connections to stories, characters, and problems that will translate into future hands-on STEM projects. Congratulations, Stephanie Carter. Next, we have Sensory Room by Trent Green, Lynn Dawson, Stephanie Vito, and Pamela Jerome at Magdick Middle School. And this grant benefits Magdick students in grades six through eight who require sensory input. The money will be used to purchase sensory supplies and equipment to create an environment for students to learn self-regulation techniques. The goal is to develop a space within the school for students to partake in these sensory exercises. Congratulations, Mr. Trent, Ms. Dawson, Ms. Vito, and Ms. Jerome. Next is Etch A Sketch: No Wi-Fi Needed by Mary Frances Downs at Magdick Middle School. This grant benefits all sixth through eighth grade students at Magdick. The grant will be used to purchase 30 Etch A Sketch devices for use in art classes. Sometimes the best toys are the ones that are tried and true, the ones that parents play with themselves and don't teach their any technology at all, good old-fashioned creative play. By toddling the knobs at the bottom of the frame, students can guide the lines into a masterpiece of their dreams. It hones and develops spine and grows motor skills, spatial awareness, and cause and effect. These devices in the room provide opportunities for creative learning beyond the regular pencil, paper, paint, or three-dimensional curriculum. Congratulations, Mary Frances Downs. Next, we have Cupcake Wars by Nicole Nick at Watts Middle School. This grant will benefit all sixth grade students at Watts. The students have been doing science all year long and have been putting their knowledge to use in real-world situations. In this project, students will have to use the engineering design process to create a model of an assembly line to mass-produce perfectly decorated cupcakes and package them in the quickest time possible, all while keeping costs at a minimum. Congratulations, Ms. Nick. And finally, the Mobile Spanish Library by Lisa West, Heather Winkler, Kristen Johnson, Lisa Ernest, Debbie Priest, and Heather Lopez, right here at Centerville High School. This grant benefits all high school students taking any level of Spanish. The grant will be used to purchase high-quality Spanish books, which students can then check out from the Mobile Spanish Library. The main objective of this project is to provide as much meaningful, compelling, and level-appropriate language input as possible in order to allow our students to deeply grow and improve in the Spanish language and culture. Congratulations to our sage Spanish teachers. Congratulations again to all the teachers who received grants this year, and thank you for the tremendous work you're doing in your classroom. For more information on any of these projects, you can visit our website at centervilleeducation.org. Thank you.
First of all, congratulations to all the teachers. They wrote some really phenomenal grants this year, and we appreciate the Centerville Education Foundation, Mrs. Ralston, and the two interns being here to make the presentations. So thank you, and congratulations. Again, as I said just a few minutes ago, we'd like to make one more presentation today and tonight, and then we'll take a little break. And Mrs. Collyby will take the tech staff out in front of the unit principal's office there and take a picture for our public relations person. So I wanted to acknowledge that school board recognition month every year is held in January. And so tonight, I have the honor of recognizing five individuals who lead our great team here at Centerville City Schools. And so on behalf of the staff and the students of Centerville City Schools, I'd like to thank all of our five elected officials for their dedication to Centerville City Schools. These five individuals have worked very hard to create a positive, nurturing environment for our staff and our students. I know our community may only think that the board spends a limited amount of time attending just a couple of board meetings a month, but attending at the board meetings really just represents a small fraction of the time that these five elected officials put in. In most cases, there are extra work sessions throughout the month. Board members are always on call. I talk to them throughout the month individually, and obviously, I write to them frequently as well. We're extremely fortunate to have such a devoted, experienced Board of Education who always keeps their eyes on the prize of student achievement. And I would just like to acknowledge each of them individually. First of all, our president for the year of 2022 is Mrs. Megan Sparks. Mrs. Sparks has been on the board since 2018. Our vice president, Dr. David Rohr, has been on the board since 1994. Board members, first, Mr. Jeff Schreier, been on the board since 2008. Mrs. Allison Dernbaugh, since 2020. And Mr. John Dahl, since 1992. So for all of you, thank you again, and in appreciation for your time and your dedication. The School, how the School Boards Association has provided personalized certificates. And then we, as a district, have a small token of our thanks and appreciation, and that's from all of the students and staff here at Centerville City Schools. So on behalf of the team here at Centerville, we certainly appreciate your efforts and your devotion and all the time that you spend. We'd like to thank you publicly and appreciate all that you do to support us and all the hard work that you do. So thank you and congratulations on being able to recognize you as a January School Board recognition. So thank you. And now we'll take just a brief break and let everybody exit gracefully if they'd like to. Obviously, everybody is welcome to stay for the entire meeting, and we'll start back up in just a minute or so. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue with our meeting. The next part of our meeting is public participation hearing of the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on the educational issues and importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The presiding officer of each board meeting at which the public participation is committed shall administer the following rules of the board. The first is the board, the portion of the meeting for participation of the public shall be limited to 30 minutes. Attendees must register their intentions to participate on a sign-up sheet for 30 minutes prior to each meeting. Individuals may not register other speakers, and no participant may speak more than once. Participants must first be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preference their comments by an announcement of their name and whether the participant is a resident or non-resident, and if appropriate, their group affiliation. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to three minutes or less. The board will listen to all who speak, but generally do not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Matters requiring follow-ups will be directed to the superintendent. I'd like to call up Mr. Scott Taylor up to the podium, please.
I think a few weeks back, I think I heard Dr. Rohr talk about.
Sorry. State your name, please.
Oh, Scott Taylor.
If you're resident or non-resident.
Non-resident.
Thank you. Sorry.
Now does my three-minute start?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, they're over.
Anyways, I believe Dr. Rohr talked about the vaccine being approved for adolescents. And I did actually do a little research about that. I had a chance to review the Pfizer trial they did for adolescents. It was a trial last June. It had 1,982 participants. It had 1,018 in the control group, 978 non-control group. And after they had this trial, 18 individuals, a non-control group got COVID. The other didn't. They declared victory. Yes, it works. However, there was a young lady named Maddie who got seriously injured by this vaccine. Some of her issues that she had, she's 12 years old. She developed gas, hepatitis, nausea, vomiting, erratic blood pressure, memory loss, brain fog, headache, dizziness, fainting, seizure, verbal and motor tics, menstrual cycle issues, lost feeling from the waist down, lost bowel and bladder control, and had a neurostatic tooth place because she lost her ability to eat. What did Pfizer do on this? What'd they report? She said she had abdominal pain. Now, we have an injury of a participant in a very low-power trial. And for some reason, the FDA still approved this vaccine for adolescents. And I know that people that are physicians do the Hippocratic oath, and they say, "We will do no harm." So I think that considering that Pfizer's been complicit with this, they have a history of producing products that damage individuals, the FDA, for some reason, approved this for emergency use, I would argue it is no emergency because if you go to the mortality website for the state of Ohio or the CDC, you'll find that students have a 0% chance of dying of this. And considering the VAERS report now has over a million injuries, actually, it's 1.1 million injuries reported now, in the whole history, the before COVID only have 800-some-thousand. My big point is that if you really care about students, you will definitely not promote this vaccine because there is no upside for them. I even had a chance to listen to the interview with the mom, 45 minutes. She talked about how Maddie got the shot, but she said, "Oh, it hurts." She normally never says that. She wanted to sleep with them that night because she wasn't feeling good. She forced herself to go to school. When she got home, she didn't make it past the threshold of the floor to their entry of their house and has not been able to walk since. This is the kind of organization that's promoting these vaccines. It appears they don't care about students.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. It's been three minutes.
Thank you. And I want to apologize that I have handouts for you, but I have printing there. I will mail them for your information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Would Ms. Denise Wright please come to the podium?
My name is Denise Wright. I am a resident of Centerville. I was here last month about the face masks. I had printed out studies about how face masks are ineffective. I had handed that to one of the members here. I don't believe that anyone read them because I know that they went ahead and promoted the face mask. So I will say that I was disappointed. I have brought another copy so that maybe we can look over this again. I'm going to quote some things that have happened in the last month, and this is from the mainstream media. Dr. Scott Gottlieb, Pfizer board member and former FDA chief, said on Face the Nation, "Cloth masks aren't going to provide a lot of protection. That's the bottom line. This is an airborne illness. We now understand that." And a cloth mask is not going to protect you from a virus that spreads through airborne transmission. The CDC updated their stance on masks, January 14, 2022, admitting that, quote, "Cloth masks, cloth products provide the least protection." Lena Wen, public health professor at George Washington University, said on CNN that "Cloth masks," quote, "offer little more than facial decorations." August 11, 2021, Brown University came out with a study that found that, quote, "Children born during the pandemic have significantly reduced verbal, motor, and overall cognitive performance compared to children born pre-pandemic." This has caused brain damage to youngsters. I'm quoting. The Journal of American Medical Association said, August 2021, "The prevalence of depression and anxiety symptoms during COVID-19 have doubled compared to pre-pandemic testing." And that's what I brought up last month, to my concern, was depression and anxiety. So at the beginning of this, we were told, "Don't wear them." Then we were told, "You're a terrible person. Don't wear them." And now we're being told, "They really don't protect us." So I just respectfully ask you to please look over this information and reconsider. Thank you.
Ms. Jill Stevens, would you like your first podium?
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Oh, okay. We'll do more. Thank you. Paul?
I don't want to try your last name, sorry.
Oh, Est?
Thank you. Paul, that's also known as Paul Subchan. I am a resident of the district. When you're in the military and you are deployed someplace where America and Americans are hated, two thoughts generally come to your mind. The first thought is to speak with God and ask him to give you this grace, finish your mission, and be returned safely to your family. The second thought is to ask yourself, "What am I doing here?" And I never had a problem with that question. I was protecting my family and loved ones from those who intended to do their part. And I was protecting what I believed to be the greatest nation that God put on this earth, a nation that allowed me to pursue my dreams, to speak freely, and to speak with my elected officials. Now, all these many years later, I find myself addressing this school board, and my free speech is restricted to three minutes. I'm also told in advance that no one on the board will respond to me. I may expect an email from Dr. Henderson or the superintendent. And I respect Dr. Henderson, but Dr. Henderson is an employee in the district. You, the school board, were elected by the people to represent us. How can you know what the citizens of the district expect from you if you do not allow them to fully state their concerns? How can you reason with them if you will not respond to them? If you're unwilling to listen to the citizens that you were elected to represent, you may have run for the wrong office. Dr. Rohr once said, referred to the school board, "We're in the people business." And I'd like to point out, the people business is not limited to employees. It includes all of the members of the school, all of the citizens of the school district. I urge you to eliminate your three-minute per speaker, 30 minutes maximum. Listen to the public, engage in a conversation with them, and your willingness to do so will go a long way in what I believe will eliminate a lot of the tension that we feel at these meetings. Thank you.
On our agenda is number seven. I am a student board rep. Present.
I'm Zoe. I have an active regard about that roundtable of the meeting we've had over the past year now almost. We had another meeting on Saturday, and at that meeting, we set a tentative date for our final meeting with legislators. And our current task within all of the schools that are involved is to speak with our personal directors and people within our district to really figure out what legislative issues are coming up that we should be focusing on. Also, in light of the board appreciation month, our student board reps just want to thank the board for all that you've done for our community in these past years. And thank you, Mrs. Sparks and Mr. Schreier, for working with us closely this year. Thank you.
Good job, girl. Next item, legislative report. It's mine. The Ohio Supreme Court ruled for decree that the Ohio Congressional map approved by the General Assembly is unconstitutional. The General Assembly has 30 days to approve a new map. The Ohio redistricting commission reconvened to start drilling in new House and Senate state legislative maps. The members of the commission were remain the same except for two individuals. The commission has until Saturday, January 22, to approve the new map. And the file for the report this month. Thank you. Next item is financial report by Ms. Sauber.
Good evening, everyone. Board members, you'll recognize these slides from last week at our work session. I wanted to review with you again the specifics of our emergency levy that is going to be expiring at the act of last week to approve the first resolution and put that on the ballot for renewal. So we have one emergency levy that was passed on November 5 of 2022. So we have one emergency levy that was passed on November 5 of 2013. That was a 10-year collection that collects $9,550,000 per year. The last year of that collection is going to be in calendar year 2023. And so on May 3 of 2022, we are recommending that the district go back on the ballot. That is our first opportunity for renewal for that levy. And so just to take a look at the numbers that go along with that, this is a very condensed version of our 10-year plan and our five-year projections that we've been talking about off and on all year long. And again, it's condensed. I did leave the revenue spelled out there, and I highlighted and read there the tax revenue. And so it's our biggest source of revenue in the district. And these are our current projections. And our current projections include the renewal continuing on. And so you can see that tax lines stay strong throughout every year of the projection. And so without the renewal, the revenue will start taking a dip in 2024, fiscal year '24, because that will be starting in January of 2024. If we don't renew this levy, half of that $9 million in the first year will go away. And then starting in '25 and '26, that $9,500,000 does not continue on. And so you can see that it quickly puts us into more significant depths of spending and a negative cash balance by the end of 2025, actually, at this point. So in terms of a timeline, last Tuesday on January 18, we did approve that first resolution to submit this levy renewal to the voters. Through the week, last week then, I worked with county auditor's office to collect for them the certification that we need now to receive with the second resolution. Tonight, agenda item 9E is the second resolution then that will allow us to go to the Board of Elections to submit this on the election. And then I will work before February 2nd, probably this week, actually, I'll go to the Board of Elections and file that paperwork to meet that deadline. And then, again, from a timeline perspective, Tuesday, May 3, 2022, then it's Election Day. There will be information that will be put out in terms of early voting and things of that nature, but that is the day of the election. Any questions about that process?
I have other information that I've provided you. Do I have some questions that you still want to add?
That's okay.
Just so, this is our opportunity to have the community hear some of these things about the levy. In addition to, we wanted to review it, does it increase taxes for our community at all?
It does not. It does not. This is a renewal. That's correct.
And that controls it to renew?
Yes, that's correct.
And I hate to put you on the spot, but I didn't know I was going to ask this question, but I remember in 2020, our revenue from the state was reduced by something 2.1 or 2.2 million, something like that. And then later in 2020, I think late fall or maybe 2021, we got about half of that back. Correct?
That is correct.
So we're still down over $1 million from the state from that point in time. From that, we never got that money back.
That's correct. We had reduced revenue in this later '20, and we did get a little bit back in '21. We got about half of that, yes.
Now, we know there was a new budget. Hopefully, they figured out what we're going to get. I know that's been delayed for a long time now, even though they passed it in June, I think it was.
June 30 is the new budget that went into place.
So I've been reading that they've now figured out what we're going to be getting. Has that $1 million that we lost two years ago, that part of we're getting back as well?
Yeah, so the quick answer is yes. I'm in the process of analyzing those figures right now. We received two payments a month. So the first payment we received in January did show an increase. They still, though, are implementing portions of that new funding model. It's not complete yet. And so I hesitated tonight to bring numbers to you because I think they're going to change between now and March. They've said that that implementation, they continue each payment, they're implementing different parts of the new funding model. So it was approved back in July, July 1, budget that went into place. Just now in January, we're being funded according to the new model. I do believe that we will be closer to 2019 levels of state funding. But that's 2019. '20, we were reduced, we don't get that back. '21, we got a little bit of it back, but not all of it yet. Hopefully, here in '22, it will be closer. And I will report those out to you, but I just want to feel confident in the information that the state is giving us before I do that.
The state, in its infinite wisdom, is not going to give us enough money to offset what we now receive in local tax letters.
No, they will not.
And this information needs to get out. We talked about getting a press release. This is no renewal for taxes. It's important for the district to continue with that, like the program that our community demanded of us a few months, and we should build behind the eight ball in regard to what the state can do. Hopefully, it'll be all sooner or later.
I agree.
All right, I have two questions that you can answer, I think. Following up a little bit on John, roughly what percent of our monies comes from the state versus local property taxes, percent by us?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we receive much more locally than what we do from a state perspective, yes.
I think it's about, what, 85%?
It used to be 86 in '14 or something.
86% comes from local property taxes. Just 15% comes from states. So the money that you sent to the state, 15% comes back to us. 15%, the rest is local property taxes, and that's why we do these things. Again, we hit it, John, there are no new taxes. But if people say, "It may not be taxes, but if we vote it down, then we will be paying less taxes." But it's also to the tune of $9.5 million less that this school district will have, which it has now. So there is a significant impact, yet there will be no new taxes raised on anyone. The other thing people bring up is the SFR funds. I'm going to comment on that, or maybe comment. Where that money is gone, that we don't use that to pay the teacher salaries, per se, we've used that money, again, for things to help with COVID. And so this is not money that's floating around that we've been wasting and not using. Could you comment on that and how much we've gotten, maybe? Sure, if you know. And then where it's gone. I know you put out a list, a log, which I have, it's the gray list.
Yeah, we have a resource online that we can supply to all of you as well, but it kind of lists each category of funding that we've received and how much we've received from each of those. There were many different grants that we received, and we're continuing to work through those. But all of them are used to address the needs throughout the pandemic. So many of our technology expenses, a lot of the PPE that we've had to purchase, certain training for staff members and things like that. We are using some of the more current funds now for some of the teacher salaries, but it's to address learning loss. And so we've added several positions throughout different areas of the district to address that learning loss and to catch our kids up to where they need to be. And I don't know, Dr. Henderson, if you want to comment a little more on that.
No, I was just going to add that, that we were calling it, and our curriculum department has talked about leading the rebound. And so as we rebound from dealing with this pandemic, we've used a significant amount of that money now for kids out in a variety of different ways, to intervene, to remediate, and to provide some additional support as we're coming, as we're continuing to deal with the pandemic. So definitely.
So if there's people, people in the public want to know where that went, they can go online and look. Where should they go?
It's on the curriculum page, the teaching and learning part of the website. If you scroll down, there's COVID, uses of COVID funds. There's a document there.
So yes, the curriculum page on the website.
And if you're not sure, just call us.
Absolutely.
We'll direct you where to go. But it's important that everyone knows where this money is and that there are false reports put out there about this levy and the money and where we've been using it. And then what the impact would be for this renewal levy. I know one of the things we talked about last time was the word emergency. Could you explain that and really what that means? You know, people, they think we're not in an emergency right now, which we're not. But what does it mean in terms of the, along the ballot?
It's just the legislative term that's been assigned to the type of levy. It's a fixed dollar amount instead of a true millage levy that has an effective rate that gets rolled back. It's collecting a dollar amount instead of, it's just a different type of levy. So it's called an emergency levy. It's called that everywhere, every school that asks for that dollar amount instead of a millage amount is referred to as an emergency levy.
So it's not an emergency. It's a fixed amount we're looking for versus saying we're going to raise 5.9 mils on a levy. This is a fixed amount. It's not an emergency.
And to do a renewal, we have to do the same kind.
So the wording will be the same.
Exactly.
So it'll say emergency again, but again, it's not that we are in emergency. It's just this is what the state requires.
That's right.
Laura, can I ask you a question about the new funding model that was passed on June 30? As I understood it, that is not fully funded right now. It's funded incrementally over six years. Is that right?
It will take at least six years to phase it in. And currently, they've committed to two years of funding for that model, the legislative process has. But as you're aware, the state approves their budget every two years. And so they can't commit funds to a future budget at this point. But the intention is that that will phase itself in over the years.
Exactly. So we're not going to see all of that in 2022?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Aubrey, to piggyback on some of what Dr. Rohr was saying, the verbiage remains the same and the term remains the same.
It does.
It is not an ongoing levy as the levy passed in 2020 was. It's a renewal of a 10-year emergency. It will be another 10-year emergency that would now expire in 2033. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, the action items. Number eight, Treasury recommendations. Consider approving the December 2021 financial statements, monthly general fund, monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, bid and now purposes, orders approved by administration, certified by the Treasury, and reported by the Board, resolution totaling $11,660. We have a motion, please.
Remove.
Second.
Ms. Aubrey, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. December 13, 2021 work session. December 13, 2021 regular meeting. January 6, 2022 organizational meeting. January 18, 2022 work session.
Second.
Ms. Aubrey, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Now we're down to action number nine, superintendent recommendations. And I can take these all together. The superintendent recommends accepting the resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificate personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries programs on the effective given dates. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts and extra duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leave absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and the dates given.
Remove.
Second.
Call the roll, please, Ms. Aubrey.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving the following firms to provide legal services to the Central City School for calendar year 2022. Gwirr-Pattenbaum LLC, Hoover Six and Associates LLC, Frost Brown Todd LLC, Booker &amp; Echol, Coolidge-Woolmsley &amp; Lombard LPA, Ohio School Boards Association, and Ohio Consulting.
Remove.
Second.
Ms. Aubrey, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider adopting a resolution providing Central City Schools the opportunity to apply for a waiver from the Ohio Department of Education for the 2022-2023 school year as Central Schools will not be providing career technical education courses for students enrolled in our middle school. This was previously discussed. We have a motion, please.
Remove.
Second.
Ms. Aubrey, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving a resolution declaring certain items of personal property obsolete and unneeded in authorizing the superintendent or his designated to sell the personal property. This was previously discussed. This is just our district's way of trying to get some revenue for items that many other districts might just throw away. So we're being physically conscious here.
Remove.
Thank you.
Second.
Can I have the roll, please, Ms. Aubrey?
Dr. Minister, just wanting to know a little bit more detail.
Absolutely. Like Mrs. Sparks said, we use every single thing in this district until it's no longer usable. We actually use parts then, fixed things that we can't use those parts for. So this is an annual resolution that we asked the board to approve. And once we're at the point where we have materials that we can no longer use, we can't use any of the parts, we've gone over with a pine tooth comb, then we do ask permission to just sell that through like a GovDeals type of situation to recap and get some money back for some of those products. So we only do that if we completely use the product and the things that we're using. So.
This is a program that other school districts use.
Right.
It's regulated by the state, how we can do this and how we can advertise it.
That's correct, right. Definitely.
Thank you.
Ms. Aubrey, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving a resolution determining the process with the submission to the elections of school district for the question. A renewal of existing tax levies pursuant to section 5705.194 to 5705.197 of the revised code.
Remove.
Second.
Dr. Henderson, would you like to say just a couple words on this one?
I'm sure. I think the board asked a really, really good question when Mrs. Aubrey was doing her report. I kind of took away what I was going to explain at this time, but obviously, it's a 10-year levy, no increase in taxes. It is labeled as an emergency, and like Dr. Rohr said, it's not an emergency. But obviously, we hope that we're able to renew this and continue to keep our district's discourse out.
Ms. Aubrey, could you might call in the roll?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving a three-year contract, August 1, 2022, through July 31, 2025, between Central City School District and the Shared Resource Center for the Treasury and Fiscal Services. This was previously discussed. We may have a motion, please.
Remove.
Second.
We may have the roll, call please, Ms. Aubrey.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving a resolution authorizing school administration to recommend for employment of substitute teachers who meet the criteria set forth in Senate Bill 1 for the resolution of the remainder of the 2021-22 school year. The Board of Resolutions shall automatically expire on June 3, 2022.
Remove.
Second.
Ms. Aubrey, could I, just kidding, could you explain that again? Could you?
Absolutely. So currently, in Ohio, to be a substitute teacher, individuals had to get a substitute teaching license. They had to have at least a bachelor's degree. So last October, Governor DeWine signed into law Senate Bill 1. Basically, what Senate Bill 1 is, it gave authorization to boards of education to employ an individual who does not hold a post-secondary degree. Now, please understand, this doesn't mean that we're going out and just hiring anybody off the street. Every district establishes criteria. So for example, in our district, we have training for those individuals that may not have that college degree. A good example that I've been using a lot as I explain this is a student teacher. We, our district, has a lot of student teachers. Universities really like placing student teachers in our district because of the type of district we are. And so once a student teacher has finished their program and has completed successfully their student teaching assignment, they still have some time yet, like at the University of Dayton, before they actually graduate. And in the past, we were not able to use them as a substitute teacher because they hadn't graduated yet. But by all remarks, they've been very successful. They've worked with our staff. They've become almost like some of the staff in the building. And obviously, there is a shortage right now of quality substitute teachers out there. And this is a good way to help remediate that situation and to provide us some options as a school district to hire some really, really good people and just to kind of bend that law just for the remainder of the school year. So this is only in effect for the rest of the school year, and it's basically in response to staffing situations that we're all dealing with, not only in schools, but all over, in all businesses and organizations. So we still have requirements and criteria that they will go through, all the background checking, training, and everything like that, so.
Ms. Aubrey, you can up the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving a resolution approving modifications to substitute and kind of employees' salary schedule in the areas of paraprofessionals, aides, secretaries, and teachers regarding scaling and substitute rate of pay.
Remove.
Second.
Would you mind, Dr. Henderson, once again?
Sure. If I may, this is really kind of tagged right on to my previous statements. Again, just because of the labor shortage, we're hoping that a slight increase with paraprofessionals from $80 to $90 a day and substitute teachers from $115 to $120 will make a difference. We've also, in our support staff, which is our paraprofessional aides and secretaries, we have a little bit of an incentive there. Part of the things that is sometimes a little frustrating is we have, if you look at our subs list, we have a pretty large subs list. It's just that people tend not to work regularly. So if we have subs that work in the support areas on a regular basis, there is going to be an opportunity for them to earn a little bit extra stipend, like a little bonus, based on how much, the frequency that they work for us, so, which we think will be important. And we think that this will motivate some to sub on a regular basis, so.
Could you just explain how this little increase compares to other districts and where we fall in that?
Sure. From a teaching standpoint, we're at the top of the, not at the very top, but we are closing in at the top for all the school districts in the Maya Valley area. A pair of pros, which are aides and secretaries and things, where this brings us right up to about the middle. So again, this is an absorbent amount of money, some slight increases. But we think, especially with our support staff, it was time to make some adjustments there because it literally doesn't bring us any higher than about right in the middle of the road of everybody else that we're surrounded by. So we're hoping that that'll make a difference as well.
Ms. Aubert, could you call the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Consider approving the academic school calendar for the 2022-23 school year. Previously discussed.
Second.
Can I have the roll? Paul, please, Ms. Aubert.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Any final comments for the good of the order of the Board of Education?
I would like to reiterate what I said last week, and I commend Dr. Henderson and the administration. I commend every teacher, every employee of this school district. This has been a tough last three or four weeks. I know how much this board appreciates sincerely all the hard work that you all have done. So thank you all.
That concludes storytime with Megan. I have so much reading. Okay. I'd like to make a motion during the meeting, or I'd like, can I have a motion during the meeting?
Remove.
Second.
Ms. Aubert, do you once again call the roll?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
It's good to see that we're all still here.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.